Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's shortly after six thirty. And I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council to order. Allison, could we please have a roll?
Councilmember Carol.
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Candell.
I'm here.
Mayor Paulson.
Here. Thank you. And if let's do our pledge of allegiance. Whoever can rise, please do so. Thank you. So our next business item is our next item on the agenda is public comment. And as always, this is for matters that are not listed on the agenda, which was posted. So if anybody has any public comments, please step to the mic and if you wouldn't mind, tell us who you are and where you live. Okay, Allison, do we have anybody in the queue on Zoom?
Looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And there is no public comment.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and move to our presentations and proclamations. And this is an agenda item I'm particularly excited about. So tonight, we have the Larkspur Community Foundation giving us an update on their projects. So please, speaker, speakers.
We have a team effort here. I'm Joan Lundstrom, President of the Larkspur Community Foundation, and Molly Wethrich is joining us. She's treasurer. Very pivotal to have a treasurer. And tonight, we're going to update you on what's happening with the community foundation. But first of all, we're celebrating ten years as a as a foundation. We're one of the youngest in Marin as compared to Belvedere at forty years and Corder Madera thirty years. And it actually, it was the Larkspur City Council that gave us five thousand dollars as startup, seed money to became a become a nonprofit. And that was a leftover money, you might say, from the centennial that was that was supported. But the foundation rely solely focuses on projects and activities in Larkspur. With a mission statement to sustain Larkspur's historic strong small town character and quality of life, we're very broadly written for flexibility. And we don't focus on on any particular item we haven't has. As such, we give modest grants to organizations and to the city for very specific projects. And we, as a foundation, doesn't don't do the do the projects themselves. And we our grant budget is modest, and our grants range from five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. Where have our grants gone? There are some examples. We work very closely with city departments. In our parks, we recently helped Hamilton Park over on South Aliso Drive with landscaping table and benches. We were one of the foundations that can and there is state funding in that. In the library, the friends of the library asked us for soft leather chairs and the Comments Foundation, we gave seed money to. And in recreation, we're now doing movies in the park. And we did. We did movies in the park, and now we're doing music in the park. Central Marin Fire, we gave money for emergency response apparatus with thermal imaging cameras. We worked worked directly with the police with the fire chief and said, what do you need in terms of emergencies? Then with community groups, we helped rehab the Lark Theater Marquee. We aided the Chamber of Commerce GoFundMe campaign during for small businesses during COVID. And we supported all three school districts during COVID for some things that they could not cover. So we're very, very flexible. Our bottom line, wide ranging list of modest grants in Larkspur. We're not single purpose, but we're like a go to group for needs. What's happening right now? We just gave a grant for sixteen hundred dollars to our wonderful community garden, which has seventy-three gardeners and a four year waiting list. They wanted money to rehab some of their walls and planting and 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 they will do all the work themselves. Another grant that we gave this year is one that's happening right now. We gave six thousand dollars to recreation for summer music in the park. You can go Friday and hear great music. And two more, one on August the second, and then another on September the fifteenth. They're all free. Tell people just just come and enjoy themselves. And one project that working on right now is we're re-landscaping downtown parking lot. Yeah, it looked quite shabby, I think, for quite a long time. And we were gave grant and other monies to do completely redo the landscaping. And it's I just got word from Public Works, they'll start in late September. And actually, we hope to showcase with drought tolerant native plants. And we're working with Julian. So hopefully, we'll get a new bus shelter. That will be the Transportation Authority. And actually, I have a picture of the original bus shelter dedication. It was nineteen seventy-five. So it's it's in time. And we hope this is the first of street beautification projects for Larkspur. But besides grants, the community foundation has acted as a fiscal sponsor to some nine community groups. And here to explain how that works is our treasurer Molly.
Hi. So as fiscal sponsor, basically, what the Larkspur Community Foundation can do is provide our tax exempt status to other charitable projects in the community. So in addition, and then in addition to those tax benefits for donors, we can provide these smaller groups also with administrative and bookkeeping activities for their funds. And in exchange for that, we charge a one percent administrative fee. So basically, how they do that is they instruct their donors to donate directly to Larkspur Community Foundation, but to indicate on their donation either by check or through PayPal, that their donation is for one of these specific groups that's fundraising that we work with. And then we keep track of those funds by group and, you know, within our bookkeeping. When a group needs access to their funds, they just let us know, and I'm able to write them a check. We currently act as fiscal sponsor for twelve groups in Larkspur. These include helping Heatherwood, who we've been working with since two thousand and fifteen. They're originally originally raised their funds to redo the playground structure in Heatherwood Park. We also have a fund for the Larkspur History Fund. And then we have seven neighborhood response groups currently, including Murray Park NRG, Palm Hill NRG, Navarro NRG, and the Green Bay Green Bray Hills NRG, which over the past few years raised twenty-nine thousand dollars to purchase and outfit the emergency trailer that's currently up on air. And our and as well, we can do small projects as well with our fiscal sponsorship, just to kind of highlight, we have raised funds for two local Eagle Scout projects that benefited the community as well. Thank you.
Just just to wrap it up, the foundation has a modest grant budget. We solely rely on individual donations. And we're proud of very, very proud of what we've done so far in our first ten years. And we really appreciate your individual support. And so we can always do more, and we look for ideas. So if you have any question, we're there. And we hope to see you at Music in the Park. We've got our new new shirts. Six. Yep, six Piper Park.
Well, thank you, Joan, and.
Can I just bring up, as the liaison to the council, I've been invited to speak to the group in September because they're very interested in, and you guys can speak to this more, in working with the Project Home Key new residents who are going to be moving into the South Aliso property that we have been working on for a number of months. And to look at hospitality and opportunities for supplying some out some items for their residences. So and you had done that previously with Project Home Key right here with the across from the church. So.
And that's King Street Senior House for formerly homeless senior citizens, just down the street block. And when we were invited to the open house, we went up to Homeward Bound is the less see from the Catholic Archdiocese for the for the that that building. And so we said, do you need anything? Are you short of anything? And Mary Kay Sweeney said, we don't have enough money for pots and pans and linens and so on. So actually, I'm the liaison to to King Street. And then later on, they said the residents want a computer and a printer. And actually, a Redwood High School student volunteered to teach them. So we're and we do give holiday gift certificates fun to them. So we're still in contact. Okay.
Yeah, well, I just had one question. But first, I wanted to thank you both. I had the privilege of meeting with you last week. And I think there were eight members and you know, really thinking about some of the things that make us a great community. You know, I would say Larkspur Community Community Foundation is one of them. So thank you. Thank you both. And thank you all, eight of you that I think were there. My one question is about how many grants grant applications do you get in a year? And, you know, just very, you know, simple, high level, how what's your selection process?
Actually, we get very few initiative grant applications. And about half of our grants go to the city. So we we keep touch and say, what are your needs? What what doesn't your budget? For single, a single project must be an identifiable project with a with a startness and you know, here it is completed. So we get we get very, very, very few.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd like more. Go on our website. See our website.
We're good to see you here tonight.
Okay, thanks again.
Need to get the word out. Thank you.
Well, we'll leave some of our propaganda here.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I think that'll that concludes our presentation proclamation, and we can move on to the approval of the consent calendar. So we have nine items on the consent calendar. Does anybody on the council want to discuss or polling item? Sure.
I'm just curious as to why a movie, why the movie theater has to, do they have a different licensing?
We suspect it dates back. It's a very old code code section. It's probably to make sure that an X rated movie theater did no community without public disclosure.
Okay.
That would be our guess.
Because I know there's only been two times we've, as a council, have approved, and that was the massage. And so I figured it was something like that. It was massage, but I didn't. I know they're going to serve alcohol, so I wasn't sure if it was for alcohol, but it's.
It's a very old code code section. So my my pure speculation is.
Makes sense.
Theater angle.
Makes sense. Thanks. Just curious.
It is an old moral thing. I'm just curious, because is there anyone from the theater here online? We did.
He's online.
Oh, he's online. I have a question.
Okay. And maybe we should, really quickly, for the benefit of the public, it sounds like the council would like to poll item four point nine.
No, not really. Well, this is a quick question. It really is a quick question.
It's just I want to make sure.
And if I don't get an answer, I won't be unhappy.
What you're talking about. So.
Okay.
Benefit of.
I'll pull it four point nine so that we can have that.
You don't want to make sky up. Okay, go ahead.
We can do it right now, which is that this is an agenda item. We have an applicant who would like to occupy the former movie theater facility that's at Larkspur Landing at five hundred Larkspur Landing Circle. And so they've applied to have a business license to operate a movie theater there. So there's your staff report. And now if you want to inquire from Mr. Corkle, looks like he has his hand raised, so.
You should be unmuted for your.
Okay, well, my question is really, it comes from my grandchildren and me, for that matter. I'm very upset about this because, I mean, it's very difficult to live in this county. We're such a high income and high cost county. And yet, for Top Gun, Indiana Jones, Mission Impossible, and now Oppenheimer. I don't know about Barbie yet. Is that going to be an IMAX? But this is my complaint. It's that I have to go out of county to go to an IMAX theater. And I don't understand that. Given the income level in Marin County, why we have to go out of county for IMAX? Now, I didn't mind it so much when it was the one on Venice, which was the old Cadillac building from the nineteen thirties. It was a gorgeous building. And it was worth parking and being nervous about parking in San Francisco. They just walked through that building. I loved it. But I'm really kind of outraged that, given the level of income in Marin County, why don't we have an IMAX theater?
Well, we tried to make a deal for the Cinema Court of Adair to convert it to an IMAX, but the people that own Scandinavian Designs had other thoughts. So the simple, the simple fact is that an IMAX configuration of an auditorium that says that Marin County doesn't have a building that's constructed in a manner to house an IMAX theater. That may change in the future. But you have to remember that, you know, there's only so many people in Marin County and look at where IMAXs are located. And typically, they're in population areas triple its size. So that's the best answer I can give you about IMAX. Any questions about my project, though?
When? How soon? That's my favorite theater. I walk to it.
If you if you would issue our business license tonight, we would open the theater for business next Friday.
Okay.
We've been working on redecorating and reseating and doing all of our work for the past six months and getting all of the other administrative approvals. This was a surprise. And here we are tonight. So hopefully, tonight you say yes, and hopefully, next week we can provide the community a new movie theater.
Okay.
In all confession, it was a surprise to your staff to that this old code section exists. So.
Okay. I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
And I'm sorry, just just for the record, I know we pulled that item. Can we put it back on the consent calendar and do it all at once?
You can. I should note, it looks like a member of the public has phone numbers familiar would like to speak to. So.
Okay. Yes, next speaker, please, before we.
Our next speaker will be caller ending one four zero two.
Hi, James Holmes. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions about agenda item four point seven. I don't know that that that's the Heatherwood Pump Station. I don't think there needs to be a staff report, but I'd like to ask some questions about it.
Okay, so so we did not go to public comment. I mean, we started off the consent number four by just having the council discussion. So public comment is where we are now. And I guess, James, you're saying you have some questions on four point seven. So go ahead and why don't you go ahead and ask me?
Yes. The regarding the funding sources, there are indicated as four sources, the the gas tax, a another gas tax called the road maintenance and rehabilitation gas tax, and Measure B and one other. And I just wondered what percentage of the total cost will come from each source and how was that allocation determined? I also wonder, what is the difference between the gas tax and the road maintenance and rehabilitation account gas tax? It seems like they're two different gas taxes. And then finally, I wonder, since this is being contracted out, I wonder if an attempt is going to be made to consider the aesthetics of the project and make sure it it doesn't look any worse, at least it doesn't look worse than than the current one, because given the fact that it's visible in a residential district, there probably should be some consideration to appearance. And it might be worthwhile to put out a rendering or or some other indication of the appearance in advance to make sure that we don't have any after the fact objections to to the appearance. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a question for staff. Would it be appropriate to pull four point seven, make a motion on the remainder? If unless there's other public requests to pull an item, pass the consent counter.
Probably be a great way to move us along.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to pull a four point seven from the consent calendar, put four point nine back on the consent calendar. I make a motion to pass everything other than four point seven at this point.
Oh, second. This is one one before we take a roll call. Allison, was there any other public comment? Because normally, we just see if anyone in the public wants to. We just heard from Mr. Holmes.
Looking for any additional raise hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no further public comment.
Okay, great. So we had a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes. Okay, so we passed all items except for four point seven. So now we're discussing that. And I think there was a question. I don't know if staff wants to address the allocation and.
So first, for the benefit of the public, item four point seven is a request from staff to fund a consultant scope for consultant that was selected by the Ross Valley Sanitary District for a project that we brought to the council previously. That project is for the two agencies to work collaboratively to take the somewhat antiquated joint pump station for sewer and storm drain that currently exists in Heatherwood and build two separate adjacent facilities. There's a lot of economies of scale captured by working together on this project. And the council, previously with the adoption of the capital improvement program, authorized us to move forward with this project generally. The speaker asked a couple of questions first about funding sources. The different sources of the gas tax come from the state, and they have to do with the the manner in which the state first collects gas tax and the way they restrict gas tax when they send it to local jurisdictions. So when you get what we would call generically, the the gas tax, that's that's the core debt gas tax that we're most familiar with paying at the pump. While it's a restricted fund, it has a fairly broad application within the categories that you're allowed to spend gas tax money on, which is a lot of different infrastructure, mostly below or at grade infrastructure. So roads and a lot of the things that are beneath it, storm drains being one of the things you can spend gas tax money on. The maintenance money is another pot the state sends to us. It has a slightly higher level of restriction to it, but it's also eligible for this project. Excuse me. And then the way we operate with the allocations, because the speaker also asked about Measure B, is we try to first fund as much of the project as possible with restricted pots of money to leave unrestricted or less restricted pots of money more available to the community. If the council wants to give me a minute, I'll have to pull the CIP itself up to see if I can find the specific estimated percentages, but they're estimated because we would first spend all the gas tax money and all the maintenance gas tax money. And then whatever balance is left, we pull out our local money, because we would want to keep as much of that local money for the council to use on local projects later on. But I'm sure if I can get a minute, I'll call up the CIP document itself, I can find those breakdowns.
Yeah, I think probably wouldn't be necessary. Through the mayor, I would suggest maybe that if Mr. Holmes wants to contact the city manager for more details, the city manager will be able to provide it through through an email. But I don't think we need to delay the meeting in order to get the information at this point, is my suggestion.
Yep. No, I think and the understanding is, it's not like it was pick and choose. We go up to the threshold of what's available outside of local, then we go to local. I think that's the gist and what those percentages are a matter of fate. Okay, so I'm I'm any other public discussion, any other council discussion on that item? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to pass the remaining consent item four point seven.
I'll move to pass that.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so that we can move on to the city manager's oral report. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to cheat. And my city manager's report is going to be to ask our new library director, Damon Hill, to come up to the mic and introduce himself. And then you can can ask him what you would like, and I'll just be quiet. So Damon, come on up.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. My name's Damon Hill. Seven days in, and it's been a great experience, very welcoming, even got a scone brought to me. And learning the community. I come from the County of Marin Library. And in here, and I'm very excited to bring forward this Twenty First Century Library and work with all the community members and just be a part of the team. So feel privileged to be here. Welcome.
I just want to let you know too, Damon did what I I often encourage folks to do, which is take a break between jobs, but we still were able to rope him in to start reading the RFQs for the new library project. So he was doing his homework even before he was actually on our payrolls. And thank you. Damon, I think we're all just super excited to be moving that project along.
My only question, Damon, is, you know, before you were at the county, I'm not real familiar. I know there's a library, you know, up in Civic Center, and there's a bookmobile, but maybe you can just, you know, let us know a little bit what you're doing.
Oh, I actually worked for the Marin County for twenty-three years. I started my career off at Corder Madera and worked there for a few years. And then I was a branch manager up at the Civic Center. And then I worked in our administration and then did a lot of behind the scenes. But I also, during that time, the county passed Measure A, which provided facility. So I was our primary contact in doing refreshes, maintenance updates, and we had ten branches, West Marin, you know, Nevada, South Nevada. And so kind of got a taste, but now to build a real library kind of brings it all exciting. So I also was a children's librarian in Oakland when I was young. And have that energy. So I hope to bring that. And I I did a lot of programming too. So with the new library and this library, want to bring forth a lot of programming for all citizens.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. Very excited to have you here. Yeah, so thank you for for taking on this position in this project and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, we've been without a library director for a while, and now we get to have a missing council member and see what Dan feels like. All right, thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, is that it, Dan, or?
That is it tonight.
That's okay, super. Let's move it, keep it moving. This is the part where we kind of get bogged down, don't we? This is council member oral reports and comments.
Well, I went to the opening of our pump station across the street at the middle school. And the things that I noted were, one, they have a they have their band. Apparently, one of the employees is part of the Golden Gate Brass Group, though they changed their name to something like the Force Main System or something for today's occasion. It's not the Los Kalinas Marching Band. It's not quite that big, but it was pretty good. I was I was impressed. The two things that struck me is it's a very high tech facility. Fascinating, the engineering behind it. But the two things that struck me the most were, they had a very expensive, I'm sure, truck that does something that dials and gauges and all this electronics that mounted behind the bumper, the front bumper was a hole with a ten pound sledgehammer in it, which I somehow find reassuring. I don't know, in this electronic age. And then inside the front door was an old fashioned ledger that the employees sign in and out of when they come in to check the building. It's not an iPad, not a computer. I was, that's just somehow I'm with a string with a pencil attached. Then that's just, I don't know, I find that comforting. I guess that's showing my age again. But that's all the excitement I have to report.
Thank you. I'll go briefly. I'll a minute here. I went to the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency meeting that Assembly Member Connolly held at Sonoma State University. And and the upshot is, is, you know, we're getting into a really hot, hot time of year. We know there's tons of smoke billowing from Canada. You know, it's an issue. You know, it's an issue for our community, a really big issue. And, you know, I'm pleased that a lot of work is going on in the and you know, what I gathered from today's meeting is. The state has a division now and there's state responsibility areas. And now the county through measure A. Is working on the county areas, they call it, the snake, you know, wraps around our community. And we have, I believe, out of 33 miles. Of a shaded fuel break around our community, I think 18 are done. So, you know, it's just good to know that that we're not resting and and, you know. There may not be a crisis at the moment, but that that was really good news. And seeing the executive director, Mark Brown, he's very good public speaker. I think he's really. He's doing us well and and the agency's doing well. And then just, you know, nine minutes away from that, I went to the SMART meeting. And some of you may have seen the Marin Grand Jury Report. So it was, you know, SMART at the crossroads and and the thought is that. You know, SMART is just not delivering, or that's not the thought, but but you know, there's the the worry that SMART's not delivering. It's kind of a boondoggle. Thirty six dollars to put someone on a seat there, not enough ridership. And and I felt there was some robust conversation. There's going to be an ad hoc committee to respond to the report. I think, again, this is an agency. Now I'm on, you know, so many different committees. I would say. Eddie Cummins, who's the, you know, Director of SMART is is very good. And there's some light at the end of the tunnel. I you know, they hit record ridership. The Marin County Fair was went just really well. They have all kinds of summer programs. Kids rides were free, parking lots were free. Ridership is going up. The goal is to get up to to break through the the highest number we ever had. And that'll be about seven or 750,000 a year. And that really means 15 million miles of road. You know, people taking off the road, riding on SMART. So I I'm, you know, concerned, but but I thought. You know, there, I think they're doing the right thing. And there's also the bikes and they had 70,000 bike users in a given month, pedestrian bikes. I'm surprised how many people. Walk along the SMART and bike along the SMART. And that's a big part of what measure Q was. So anyway, and one last thing is I I'm. Thank you. I've been doing out office hours all year and and I'm gonna see if it's feasible to do, you know, mayor on on the SMART train, you know, just to see if. Anyone wants to join me and and it's everybody rides. It says it's clean, it's on time and it's cheap. And, you know, it's really more for recreation. The commuter piece remains as it is, but I would just love our community to benefit. And they piloted micro transit at Snowman Airport and I'm really pushing hard to get that down here. So Green Bray. And and Cortimaderon, these communities will have like a Uber Lyft type service to get people and get them over the ferry. So. I think there's there's still a future, but but you know, it's it's an agency that needs to, you know, we need to do a lot, do a lot of work. So anyway, that's my report and.
Had one thing.
Yeah.
Just thought about it as I saw that a whole number of people who are on our Zoom screen. For those who. Just to remind everyone that with Councilmember Haroff's retirement. We are holding a replacement election for him in March of 2024. So if you are interested, if you know people who are interested in running for city council. Be aware that that information will be coming out this fall. And the election is in March, so it's really important for those on online and those who are very concerned. And have been coming regularly to meetings and attending about issues if you want to take on on this role. March 2024 will be the election for the replacement of Councilmember Haroff. So. Send the word out, please, because we really would like it to be a robust, I would like it to be a robust. Number of people who are interested in serving.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that concludes item number six and now we move on to public hearings. Item number seven and the first one. Seven point one is to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1069, which amends. Various sections of our Luxford Municipal Code. So if we could please get a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Paulson. Tonight, you're being asked to introduce ordinance 1069. To containing administrative updates to the municipal code. Over the past few months, staff has reviewed the code and highlighted needed changes in order to eliminate outdated language. Correct code references and reflect current city practices. The ordinance is broken down into 19 sections and a table of the proposed changes was included in your staff report for tonight. And you can take those sections individually tonight to make any changes or remove them if you feel they need further review. But councils asked to open the public hearing, receive public input. And make a motion to introduce and approve the first reading of the ordinance 1069. If introduced, ordinance would be brought back at the next regular meeting. And staff is available for any questions about the individual sections in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And and so this, of course, was posted publicly and, you know, I I think. Hopefully, any of you who wish to comment have read over council. You know, one of the things I saw is a lot of the language was inconsistent or antiquated. What seemed most significant to me was the, you know, heritage or the the tree appeals would not be handled by Parks and Rec, but by. Planning Commission, you know, to make that change. And I don't know if council wants to comment on anything else, but that was that was sort of my summary.
I mean, I think that was a conversation that's been going on for a little while. I think that's totally appropriate for them. It looked good to me. There were worse than anything that left out at me of inconsistency. So I'm comfortable with it.
I am comfortable as well. I think probably public comment would be appropriate.
No, just I'd like to see it regularly cleaned up like this. It makes a lot of sense and I know everything. Fits very well. I I'm very happy with it.
Okay, so with that, let's go to the public. Is anybody in the chamber want to make any comments on this? Item seven point one. Cleaning up our Luxford Municipal Code, the language, small procedural thing. They seeing nobody else? Do we have anybody in the queue?
Our first comment will come from caller ending in 1402.
Hi, James Holmes, Luxford. I would like to comment on the proposed shift of. Tree hearing jurisdiction from Park and Rec to the Planning Commission. This is a fairly drastic change considering that. The tree hearings have been the domain of Park and Rec Commission ever since the inception of the tree hearing ordinance 30 to 40 years ago. Initially, I wonder if we check to make sure that the general plan or other governing documents don't. Require it to be with the uh, Park and Rec. But aside from that, my first thought. Is whether the Park and Rec Commission was consulted to determine their feelings on this. It wouldn't seem to be very collegial thing to do to take a big bite out of their jurisdiction without consulting them first. I question whether this should be done. First, since Park and Rec has done this so long, it has developed an institutional. Expertise and memory that should not be lightly discarded. Second, planning already has a fuller plate usually than Park and Rec does. So assigning this hearing to Park and Rec seems like a. Reasonable division of labor. Incidentally, I believe the tree hearings are Park and Rec's only regular adjudicative hearings. So. They're able to focus on it more precisely. And I think in the past, they've handled it well. Finally, I think this function seems to be more in Park and Rec's bailiwick. Because the planning commission's focus is really more on the built environment, whereas the Park and Rec is more focused on on elements of the natural. Environment and design and aesthetics relating specifically to the natural environment, such as parks. So for all and and they would consider whether any kinds of required replacement trees would would go into parks. So for all these reasons, I would leave the tree hearing with Park and Rec. But at a minimum, I would ask the commission members if they want to lose this jurisdiction first. Thanks.
Okay, I I guess if staff wants to comment on that, we could maybe get through all the comments first and then come back to that. So is there anybody else in the queue, Allison?
Looking for any additional raise hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no further public comment.
Okay, so we don't have any more comment in the chamber, no public comment. So yeah, we can get some clarifications. That would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So I first took this to the Parker Rec Commission in 2020. And at that time, I think with the uncertainty around COVID, it was challenging for the commission to. To reject or endorse this idea. I think generally what their concern was is that. At the time, we were building a community services department and they were concerned that. The Parker Rec Commission was losing authority over something at a time when there might be a balance of power issues between. The park and rec, the recreation operation and the library operation. So it's a convoluted story. The council put this on its work list in 2019 as something they wanted to see happen. And so it's been conveyed multiple times. To the Parker Rec Commission that eventually this would happen. And in fact, I feel bad that for a variety of reasons, we didn't do it sooner because former Park Rec Commissioner Sandy Blavell. Probably asked me every other month why we hadn't done it yet. The reason I think everyone supports it is our multi-fold first. The Plan Commission actually does do tree hearings now. They do tree hearings whenever those tree hearings relate to planning projects, which is actually a lot of the time. These particular hearings are when someone wants to remove a tree, but doesn't necessarily have a planning. Application that's tied to that particular proposal. So. Right now, anytime anybody applies for to remove a heritage tree. It's processed by the planning staff regardless of who's going to adjudicate the matter. So you have that issue to begin with, that that's where the staff work's being done. And then secondly, I think what. We've found over the years is the Planning Commission is trained from the day a planning commissioner joins. That they have to make findings and that they're in an adjudication scenario a number of the time. They they're quasi judicial body in some respects. And so they're comfortable doing that and tree hearings require those types of. Findings be made. It's not what we normally ask of the Park and Rec Commission, so it doesn't actually fit. The vast majority of what we do ask of them. And then lastly, the Parker Rec Commission, one, doesn't meet as regularly and two. Has trouble sometimes making a quorum, to be frank, because there's not a lot of other pressing business. So it's understandable. That they don't necessarily meet. And most recently, we had a tree hearing get delayed. For two months because we couldn't get everybody together to do one. And if it's at the Planning Commission, we won't have that problem. Because our code does ask that we move things expeditiously through the process. So. And I don't believe there are any concerns in any other document. It's just changing the municipal code.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I've been observing the Planning Commission for the months now. And now it's official as of the last meeting that I'm. Replacing the other Kevin, the former other Kevin. How do I refer to him now? As the liaison to the Planning Commission and I they've, I've heard them hear several tree issues. And their expertise is beyond question. I'm very impressed with them. I was surprised when I saw this language. When I read through this, that it wasn't already their responsibility because they obviously have the. Not just the technical competence, but. The judicial temperament of how to deal with these kinds of issues. And so I think this is. The perfect solution to, I don't see how it's a park and rec. You know, thing. I mean, I guess because people think of trees being in our parks, but. The trees we're talking about are throughout the community and I I trust their judgment.
It's my understanding the decision was based. Heavily on the staff people that were available when they created the tree hearings and the person who was serving as recreation director. Had the background to manage the tree hearings. And so was placed at that staff location. And then was complimented with, well, it should go to your commission that you work with. And I think that is actually. Probably very accurate story. I've I've never gone and tried to track people down and confirm that, but it's. Sort of been handed down in lore that way.
Yeah, and I I just say briefly, I'll concur. The experience and the training is is compelling reason. And we have actually been a part of the appeals. And they're typically not trees in parks. They're trees that are going to be part of construction. They're very much part of a planning permit and a planning process. So. I I I appreciate Mr. Holmes' comment, but I I think, you know, they have been contacted. They don't reach quorum. The experience. Everything seems to be in the planning commission. So with that.
So I'll move approval of seven point one to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1069. Amending various sections of Lark Street Municipal Code. Thank you, Allison. That work.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes. Okay, great. So then we move on to seven point two, which is a public hearing on rent stabilization and eviction protections. So just by quick way of intro, you know, there's a little bit of confusion around this and I wanted to try to clarify that. As a matter of process, I wanted to introduce. You know, and get public comment on both A and B. So we have the two ordinances. One is the. Just cause eviction and tenant protection, the others rent stabilization. The question may be, you know, we we had. Moved to, you know, from the public hearing to to, you know, have this voted in as an ordinance at this meeting for. 1068, which is just cause. We did not reach that for 1067. I I just wanted them both brought back back, brought brought back for closure. So 1067, I don't think is. Something that's going to change the vote that was, but I thought it was appropriate since they were really linked together and we had. Nine months or more of discussion. I just wanted that closure to happen tonight. So. So my my plan then was to to allow us to have staff report on both, have public comment on both. And then we could deliberate them separately. We'll talk about 1068 first and then 1067. So if we could just get a a staff report and then we'll go to public comment. As per deliberation, but but you were gonna allow comment on both, staff report on both, just so it doesn't double the time.
Mayor's covered quite a bit in my staff report. So good evening, you've at the council's direction. You instructed us to bring these matters back for public hearing at this council meeting. As the mayor was explaining, we itemized. The two ordinances on the agenda separately because we wanted it to be very clear to the public that one of the ordinances is on a second reading. The other one's still at the point of whether you want to introduce it or not, a first reading, if you will. So. We also put the eviction protections one listed and itemized first because. That's the one that you could essentially put into the municipal code this evening if you so choose. But I concur with the mayor. I think folks want to talk about these topics together. It's easier for you to manage it as one public hearing and invite public comment as people want to speak on the matter. And in address either of these topics before you deliberate on them. But to be clear, the the ordinance. The the ordinance on eviction protections could be passed this evening in the form that's presented to you. And it would then go into the municipal code in 30 days, right? 30 days. So versus the rent stabilization ordinance. Is still in a first reading stage. So if you were to move on it or some variation of it this evening. It would come back to you for a second reading at a subsequent meeting. Now, with all that said, what we tried to do is summarize in the staff report. What the ordinances are doing that's different from the Tenant Protection Act. Because it's essentially what you're doing by adopting local ordinances is you're strengthening state law. And in a way that you feel is appropriate locally. So for the benefit of the public, if you have access to the staff report online or in. Published printed form here in the chamber, you'll find that the. Staff report on page three will explain to you with two bullets, what are the key changes. To state law that are being implemented by the eviction protections ordinance. And that is essentially that the council. Has proposed in this ordinance that should someone be subjected to a no fault, just cause eviction. They will be compensated with an amount that is either three months. Of their rent or $5,000, whichever is greater. That's distinct from state law, which requires only compensation of one month's rent. The other thing that this ordinance would do is it says that if you, if a landlord. Uses a no fault, just cause eviction to vacate a unit and then decides. In the first 12 months that they've decided they want to lease the property again, they need to offer the person who was subject. To that no fault eviction, the opportunity to rent it again at the amount they were paying at the time of eviction. And so there were also two amendments made at the dais, the last. And so there were also two amendments made at the dais, the last meeting that are also discussed in here and that had to do with a little bit stronger protections for some vulnerable populations. To try to make this as clear as possible, I asked the clerk to publish the amendments and legislative notation in the agenda items. So if you call up the agenda item, you'll see language that's struck out and then new language is inserted with underline. That's what we would refer to as legislative notation. And that's to be really clear what was changed at the dais at the last public hearing. Moving on that to the other ordinance, ten sixty seven, which is the rent stabilization ordinance. Again, the staff report tries to identify for you what is different in the proposed ordinance from the tenant protection act. In this case, there are three bullets in the staff report also on page three that explain to you that one, this ordinance where you to pass it establishes that in a twelve month period, rent may not be increased more than five percent plus a consumer price index or seven percent, whichever is lower. That's distinct from state law, which is five percent plus CPI or 10%. And then this also in this ordinance, it would establish the process whereby a landlord could petition to receive a fair rate of return that exceeds the cap that you're establishing. And then lastly, it empowers the council to charge a fee to administer this program, which is essentially the the necessary part of the ordinance so that we could return with the proposal for a rental registry and administer the program properly. As the mayor stated, this didn't move forward at your last meeting. So again, it's in its first reading form, but you did instruct us to bring it back to you. So at that, Mr. Mary, turn it back to you. Staff's available for questions and then you need to conduct a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So before we move to public comment, I I we passed the minutes and I would say there are little it's I found it even sitting up here and really trying hard to pay attention. I think we had five amendments, so things went back and forth. It was a little confusing. So hopefully we get clear tonight on where everything sits and we can make some progress. But with that, you know, we've got the two which are separate ordinances, but they're very linked issues. So I wanted to turn it over to the public to take public comment and then we'll bring it back and work on ten sixty eight first, you know, see if we can move that and then talk about ten sixty seven. So let's start in the chamber. Anybody wants to make public comment, please approach Mike. And yeah, and tonight, why don't we have a two minute time limit? Nobody. Okay. Maybe when we come back. Okay, so Allison, do we have anyone in the queue?
Looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. And the first comment will come from Missy.
Okay, welcome, Missy.
Yeah, Missy, I'll ask you to unmute. I'm not seeing she's able to unmute at the moment, so I'll move to Johnson Reynolds and return later.
Okay, welcome, Johnson.
Yeah, I've been following this regularly. I'm a member of Marin organizing committee, but I don't live in Larkspur. I do live in the canal area, but I feel I'm a member of Marin County. And these issues that Fairfax has faced and San Selmo and other cities about rent stabilization and just cause for eviction have been brought forward. One thing about the just cause that I remember was if a landlord decides to rehab the property, it can't be just to spruce it up a little bit. It has to be safety and health concerns that that he needs to do and then three months or something like that, or two months. And then return it back to the to the tenant. That's my understanding. That was not mentioned in the summary tonight, but that's my understanding. If I'm wrong, let me know. The other thing is the rent stabilization, of course, we had a lot of conversation about that before and you know, the issue for me was, and and I think it was Kevin, no, Kevin Carroll, who talked about two thirds of CPI. Our five percent, whatever is whatever is lower. That was my, I I would go with that proposal. I know landlords have a problem with that. My the issue is, you know, it used to be, I don't know if you have an ordinance called mandatory mediation. If it goes above five percent, there could be a requirement for mandatory mediation to increase by about five percent. That would be another alternative there, but I I would go with the two thirds of CPI. And our five percent, whatever is lower. I'd like to hear.
Johnson, you have a couple of seconds left.
Landlords on that. I know mayor was concerned that the landlords haven't taken fair shape on this, but.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next comment, please.
Next speaker is Alexis Arguelo.
Welcome, Alexis.
Hello, thank you. My name is Alexis Arguelo, and I am speaking on behalf of the North Bay Labor Council. We represent working people in Sonoma, Marin, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. Working folks everywhere are struggling, especially here in Marin County. Inflation is out of control. Wages aren't really keeping up, and it's hard just to keep a roof roof over your head to say nothing of supporting a family. There are almost 600 union workers living in Larkspur, many of whom were essential workers during the pandemic and kept the rest of us going. Please do the right thing, provide hardworking people with some sort of meaningful housing security, accept a rental cap of of 100% of CPI or 7%, whichever is less, adopt a just cause eviction ordinance, and help keep Larkspur renters in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Next comment.
Next speaker is Josette Schwartz.
Hello. Hi, I am a resident of Bon Air. And I've been renting for the last seven years. I used to own a home. My my girls were raised in Greenbri, went to the public schools. I am a teacher. And I am concerned with the rent increasing and more specifically residents have had different rent rent increases in the past years. And rent increase with Bon Air used to be stable and we kind of knew where we were going. And now things are changing. And as a teacher, I cannot stay in the years to come if this continues. So I need to know where we're going with this and if there is any recourse or some sort of reassurance that there will be a cap on this. My last rent increase was 6.5%. And last year was lower than that. So that's where I'm standing. Thank you.
Thank you, Josette. Next comment, please.
The next speaker is Tristan.
Welcome, Tristan.
Hi, good evening, guys. Thank you for having me. Tristan from Skylark and the Skylark Tenants Association. I wanted to call out a study that came out in the recent weeks done by UCSF on the causes of homelessness in California. Big surprise, the number one reason people went homeless is they can no longer afford housing. Rent control will fix that. Small amounts, this is something that stood out to me too. Very small amounts of of money make a very big difference. Seventy percent of the homeless people they surveyed said that a reduction in just of just 300 to $500 a month and expenses, mandatory expenses would have been enough to keep them in their homes. And just two years under prime, most of our rents have gone up at least $300. Hmm. There are also just 24 housing units for every 100 extremely low income people in California. Letting faceless hedge funds like Prime continue to chase profits will only exacerbate this problem. Affordable housing needs to stay affordable. We can't afford to use any of the low income housing units we have already. Whether whether that is naturally as Skylark was or because of a rent control ordinance, new housing will never be able to fulfill this need in the free market. And the only thing Larkspur can do is already preserve what already exists. A strong rent control ordinance aligned with the values originally provided with STA, which is the two thirds of CPI or five percent, whichever is lower, will stem the bleeding in Larkspur. Continued opposition to do anything on this matter is a failure of the city council to protect its residents from predatory rent increases and will only make the homelessness situation in Marin, the Bay Area and the city state worse. Please pass a strong rent control ordinance that actually protects your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Tristan. Next comment.
I will return to Missy if you're able to unmute at this time. And I'll ask you to unmute. It appears she's unable to unmute.
Okay. All right. So let me try one more time in the chamber. Anybody want to make any public comment? Okay, we have some takers.
Hello, Mayor Paulson, council staff. My name is Romeo Arietta with the Marin Association of Realtors. And I my comments are based for based on our realtors who help owners of sort of the smaller properties that people who may own one or two or three rental properties. I sent an email earlier and I had one question, and this is on the rent stabilization ordinance. And I'm still a little bit confused because I believe there was a vote. And in the minutes, there was, it said it had a roll call of the votes and that was voted down. So I was unsure if it can be brought up or if that process needs to be started over again. So question that'll take off the air later. The the by comments shifting to the the other part of the ordinance is really about the amount that somebody that rental housing provider would have to pay somebody who is evicted for just cause. There the amount, it's an amount and up to 5,000, whichever is greater. Our concern is in a situation where it's a very low rent for whatever reason that that may be burdensome on the potential person who only owns one one or two rental units that they provide. So the other question that I had, I I would ask the council to consider either lowering that or lowering it to two months. And I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Romeo. Okay, any other comments?
So that question
Yeah, let's.
about what we voted on to the end. Okay.
I think, yeah, once we get everything, we can try to remind what happened last meeting and stuff like that. Anybody else?
I will.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Karen Crowe, and I live at Bon Air Apartments. I wrote a a comment and sent it to the last month's and I lived in Bon Air for a year and a half. And my rent got increased by 10%. And if it continues to do every year at 10%, it is not sustainable. My income doesn't go up 10%. And it's it's a wonderful place to live and I won't be able to live there along with everybody else in my complex that I've talked to. It's just not sustainable at 10% a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, council. Oh, sorry. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Angelina Soldatos, and I am with the California Apartment Association. I want to acknowledge that this has been a long process for all of us here, and I want to thank you for your consideration. CAA strongly urges the city council to consider the ramifications of the just cause for evictions ordinance ten sixty eight that is being considered tonight. When discussing the subject of first right of refusal, I'd like to mention the following. Only after a housing provider has paid thousands of dollars in relocation costs, as outlined in the ordinance, within the first year to put the unit back on the market, they would have to offer it back at the rate that the renter was paying. Would the council consider a window of opportunity for the housing provider to have a process that would allow them to pass through the cost of the renovation to the rent, to the rent price that is applicable under state law? The way that this ordinance is outline, housing providers housing providers will incur debt that can never be mitigated over time through charging market rate rent after investing in their property. My next question is, can Larkspur bear the overall cost or administrative duties of the proposed ordinance? Suggesting housing providers shoulder the financial burden of the proposed laws tonight is simply unfair. From the costly relocation cost to a one year first right of refusal and the possibility of even touching on rent control again. Is this ordinance operationally viable for the housing providers in Larkspur? I am looking to the city council tonight to make the right decision. We are asking for fairness when considering rental regulations in Larkspur. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
That was thirty. Go ahead.
All right, sorry. Council members, I want to start by saying that we understand this has been a long process. It's been about seventeen months. It took six months for us to be put on the agenda, the rent control issue. My name is Jockey. I'm with the Skylark Tenants Association. Association. And thanks to Vice Mayor Candell, you made a move, a proposal that actually agendized this item in in August of 2022. It's taken the next nine or so months, eleven months actually, for deliberation to happen. And I wanted to just acknowledge that that this process has been a long process. First, I'd I'd want to start by just saying we urge you to adopt the just cause eviction ordinance and move forward with our rent stabilization ordinance. That includes a compromise rental cap of 100% of CPI or 7%, whichever is less. You have made great progress in just having the the just cause eviction ordinance written and voted on unanimously at the last city council meeting. So we urge you to pass that. I have to be candid because we've been candid in this chambers. We are disappointed as tenants of Larkspur. We represent 50% of your residents, of your constituents. And for over a year now, we've been coming to you. We sounded the alarm in February of last year that our homes were in jeopardy. For the next seventeen months, we've 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 come to you, we've spoken with you, we've talked about what we needed to do to save our homes. And today we are going through the second rent increase because you, as our city council, could not actually agree on the proposal that you made, Mayor Paulson, to actually pass something to protect us. A lot of my neighbors will not be able to survive another rent increase. I I want you guys to think about that and for that to be on your conscience, that you've let us down as your constituents. We have come to you. We have laid our hearts to you. We have shared with you and you have not done anything to protect us. We're disappointed and we feel left alone.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Dorothy. I live in Larkspur. It's red. Sorry. I'd like to echo Jockey. We're very disappointed. There have been a lot of preemptive rent increases. You heard from someone at Bon Air who has laid out for you that there are 10% rent increases happening at Bon Air. Preemptively, that has not been historically what happens at Bon Air. But because you guys are taking so long, this is what's happening to the Bon Air residents. It's happening at Skylark. You voted against a compromise or the potential of passing anything that you discussed in your last meeting. And since that has happened, Skylark has gone from 7% rent increases back up to just under 10% rent increases again. So the preemptive rent increases are happening now. And like Jockey said, you know, many of us are, we can't survive. We can't survive this. And Mayor Paulson, you have said again and again, this is a very desirable place to live, which seems to imply that those of us who are not of the most elite income shouldn't try to live in Larkspur. And it sort of sounds like you're firing us from being your constituents. So I'd like to ask you to consider whether or not you are truly Mr. Switzerland, like, you know, you could go either way. You want to be fair, listen to everybody. Please pay attention to your point of view and take some action. Actually protect your constituents. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else?
I'm a bit disgusted too. I appreciate you having taken so much time to work with us, except that you really didn't work with us. So we do need to establish strong rent stabilization, not a high rent cap. The proposed 7% rental cap is unacceptable. I still don't understand where you came up with 7%. Um, 49% of renters in Larkspur are rent burdened, and half of those are severely rent burdened. In my case, with the previous owners increasing rents at CPI or 2%, 3%, it took 28 years to double my rent. Now with 7%, it will take 11 years, and I will be living that long. But I don't know. I doubt it will be in Larkspur. So we urge the council to accept a fair compromise and amend the draft ordinance with a rental cap of 100% of CPI, which is our compromise. Or 7%, whichever is less. If the council fails to pass meaningful rent stabilization, we will be forced to introduce a citizen valid initiative and take this issue directly to the voters. Regarding tenant protections, I was not so happy with the way you came out with it, but please formally adopt the Just Cause Eviction and Tenant Protections Ordinance tonight and help protect thousands of Larkspur renters from being unfairly forced out of our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Pam, and I live at the Bon Air Apartments. I just wanted to echo what some other people have said that I've only been there a year and a half, and I already moved in at market rate. And I was given a, I just recently got a 10% increase. I'm retired senior on a fixed income, and this will probably be my last year in this apartment. I'm now paying, I'm now paying almost half of my gross income in rent. And everybody knows this is not sustainable. I'm not the only one who got an unreasonable increase. In my area, I I've talked to a lot of people, and everybody has had the same experience, sometimes two increases in the same year. So I just want to know, you know, like, where's the protection for people like me and for families and for people who want to live in the county where they're employed? And I don't know what the plan is. Is it to force thousands of people out of the county and leave behind a glut of empty apartments? And you talk about what's good for business. That's not good for business. So or for, you know, people landlords or or local businesses. So I echo the the wish that you would accept the more either the fair compromise of the 100% of CPI or 7%, whichever is less, and to also please formally adopt the Just Cause Eviction and Tenant Protections Ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Next comment or any other comments? Okay.
Hi, I'm Anne Clark and I'm Larkspur Courts. Can you hear me? The Just Cause No-Fault Eviction Protection, we need really bad. At fault evictions have always taken place in apartment rentals forever. And I've been in property management forever. They were always available as a legal recourse for landlords' owners. If you don't pay your rent, among the other common sense provisions, you will be subject to an eviction. The only difference now in evictions is what is called no-fault evictions, and this has been only recently because of what is called forced appreciation that landlords slash owners are using to renovate their apartments to get all of their rentals, all of them, up to market rate rather than letting free market forces take place naturally, keeping people moving on their own accord. Landlords are forcing people out to bring all of the rentals up to market rents. If you are forcing out people, compensate accordingly, three times their current rent. So if they're in a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, their rents, their actual rents, because of their family, they need the three bedrooms. So leave out the 5,000, whichever is more. I mean, yeah, with more. So three times their current rent. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, any other comments? Okay, so seeing none will.
I think you have a few online.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's go back to that then.
The next comment from the Zoom queue will be Jacqueline Harris.
Okay, welcome, Jacqueline.
Hi, good evening, Council, Mayor, and thank you all for taking on this this issue, but I'm still just so flummoxed, as many people are, that we're talking about 7% and 10%. And these are numbers that are so unrealistic for anyone who is on a fixed income like myself. I'm 75. Or I'm sure for anyone that tries to work in this community and live in this community. And I keep hearing the argument that if the town stabilizes rent, that it will have a depressing effect on new housing being built. But my point is, if that's so, address that problem, but don't put it on the back of renters. Be creative in addressing that problem, that there's a kind of fact between rates, rate rent stabilization and housing. New housing. Address that by making it attractive for builders to build new housing, lower taxes for them, whatever. There's, there's business ways to do this without putting it on the backs of of senior citizens and workers. Just decouple that issue. And don't pretend that this is the only solution, that raising rents 10% a year or 7% a year is the only solution. That's just letting management have their way. Um, the other thing is, who among you gets a 7% or 10% increase in your salary every year? It's inflationary to let business do that to renters. It's unconscionable. In addition, why can we not have five-year rental contracts? Why does it come up every year, this issue? No one can can have stability in their in their budget, budgetary decisions with it with rent increases like that. Five years should be absolutely in the standard.
Jacqueline, just one more, one more. We're out of time. You just want to wrap it up.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Next speaker is Stephen Rajninja.
Welcome, Stephen.
And Stephen, I'll ask you to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, I'm a homeowner in Larkspur. And I'm calling to advocate for the renters on at risk of losing their homes who have spoken today. This legislation hasn't passed more easily and more quickly. Disappointed that there aren't more homeowners calling in to advocate for the renters who have spoken on behalf of themselves and their neighbors who are at risk of losing their housing at the cause of of rent increases that are unconscionable. What are we afraid of as large as large for residents? What are we afraid of, of passing and adopting just cause eviction ordinances? What are we afraid of for creating a rent stabilization ordinance that's more meaningful than a 7% limit, which is, is, is as the all the callers and speakers who have spoken is, is, is an unreasonable amount for people to pay as an increase. No one gets that kind of wage increase year after year. So I, as others who have spoken today, am strongly advocating for a compromise, 100% of CPI or 7%, whichever is less. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Uh, next speaker.
Looking for any additional raised hands from our Zoom audience members. Uh, next speaker will be Patty Souza.
Welcome, Patty.
Thank you. Well, I'm calling in. I'm a, I'm a Larkspur resident and homeowner now, so own one unit that I rent, and I've owned it for 20 years, and I've always rented it below market. Way below market. So I've been taking a loss on it, and I'm for rent control protection. My best friend lives in the Skylark, and I'm horrified by what's going on up there. But at the same time, the, the rent, the rent control stuff will apply to me. So it makes me very frightened about owning property here anymore. And if this passes, I, I have to protect myself, and I don't want to have to do that. But it's a pain, you know, I'm just afraid of what my tenants will do. And they've been there for 12 years, and I hate to even think about selling my place, but that's what I think I need to do. And so I'm, I'm thinking that I wish there was a compromise so that it didn't create a contentious atmosphere between tenants and landlords. I don't think it should be that way. I've never been that way with properties that I've owned. But I certainly understand these big corporations that come in and raise the rents exorbitantly that they've been doing when it's probably not necessary. They probably have a huge profit margin. I've been operating in the red for 20 years. So for me, this is punitive, but I totally understand, and I'm for the rent stabilization. I'm not, the, the other stuff makes me nervous. So I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Patty. Okay, next speaker.
Looking for any final raised hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no further public comment.
Okay. All right. So then let's close public comment and bring it back to the council. So we have the two issues covered by the staff report, the two ordinance, I mean, and covered by public comment. But let's proceed by going with ordinance 1068 first. So this was the Just Cause Eviction and Tenant Protections. And, you know, just to, there are a fair number of things that were said in the audience that may require clarification. As I said, we just let everybody have public comment. We can come back to that. So perhaps we can divide that now and, you know, any of the issues that came up about 1068. You know, we can discuss those just as a matter of reminding myself or ourselves. So June 21st was the last time we met, and we know we had these, the public hearing. And my recollections in the minutes is that what is in front of us now was passed for one. And the four members sitting here all voted for that, and Kevin Harrow voted against. So that, that's where we left. And then on 1067, we can get that to that later. But there were a number of amendments and, and, you know, there was some for, some against. It got rather confusing to keep count, but why don't we get to that when we, when we finish 1068? So I turned to my fellow council members for any thoughts or discussions on 1068. I mean, again, I, I guess I got timed out. And no finger snaps for me, that's for sure. I'm sorry. Oh, it's, it's on. Okay, yeah. Is that, okay, that's better. Okay, sorry. Let me turn this thing off for me. So it doesn't keep eating. Okay, there we go. So so bringing it back to my fellow council members for any thoughts or discussions. If memory serves, we all agreed to, you know, on the 21st to what was, what was put in the ordinance.
I, I share a few questions for staff, if I could. Well, the first is, we discussed if for a, a question was asked about whether, when, if there is construction, there's good cause eviction, the tenant comes back at the same rate, the property owner can then petition the city and say, hey, based on the construction costs, could I charge over whatever the, the rent was, or did we decide that when they come back at the same rate? Because the construction was already done, that they couldn't then petition? I don't remember if it was, they had to ask beforehand or after. Do, can you remind us how that went? And I'm sorry, do you understand the question?
I do. So what you're asking is, one is, one of your speakers pointed out that the way the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance is written, if I've been subjected to a Just Cause eviction, improvements are made to the unit. And then I am offered the right to return the way the ordinance is written, I would return at my previous rent, even if the landlord had made investments in the unit. Part of the reason you're remembering it the way you are, Vice Mayor Candell, is because we were talking about the two ordinances in concert, and most jurisdictions do adopt both of them, and the rent stabilization side of the process captures that ability to ask to to recoup some of the cost for the investment that you've made. Is it conceivable you could craft language to allow a landlord to recoup some of that cost? Yes, it is conceivable. I would encourage you to, to, if that's something the council wants to do, consider still passing the ordinance and give us instruction to bring that as a subsequent ordinance that we could add that amendment in, once we'd agreed on what that looked like language wise, because really, we'd be taking a very specific piece of the rent stabilization side of this, and we'd be moving it over to make sure it got captured in the municipal.
Okay, so the, the way it stands right now is the tenant would come back at the rate that was previously charged, and the property owner would not have the ability to petition to try to recoup those costs. Correct. It's written now. The way it's written now. Thank you. And I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then Sky was reminding me, there's still the Tenant Protection Act to consider. So even if you came to petition or recoup, the most you can recoup is whatever the Tenant Protection Act is allowing you to okay, charge to.
Yes, right. And then the last thing I, I know, I got an answer this last time. I just remembered what it was. Is that if there is a, a year lease, at the end of the lease, the tenant has the ability not to renew that lease if they choose to for, they don't need a reason. They can just say, hey, I don't want to renew the lease. Since it is a contract, does the property owner also have the option to just say, you know, I, I just don't want to lease it anymore. Your, your lease is over? Or is this is what we're passing, basically saying, you know, even though it's a one-year lease, it's really an eternal lease until the tenant decides they no longer want to be there?
All right. So the way, and I, I may end up doing this again, where I just have to sort of read some of the text, but because it is the, I haven't come up with a better way of explaining this, but the, the, under the Tenant Protection Act, the end of a lease term is not considered an at-fault or no-fault just cause for termination of the tenancy. So in effect, you get to the end of one year. The property owner effectively has to, assuming no other bases for termination, the, the property owner is effectively in the position of having to offer another one-year lease. If the tenant refuses, and the lease has to be for an additional term of a similar duration with similar provisions. If the tenant refuses the new lease, then that's considered an at-fault just cause for termination, and the tenant may be evicted at the end of the lease term.
Okay, so hearing that, wouldn't it be in the tenants, I'm sorry, in the property owner's best interest to have a long-term lease because they can't evict somebody at the end of the lease anyway? So at least it would be a mutual, hey, we're both, because one of the comments was, why don't they just do your five-year leases? And it seems that if And it seems that if we do pass a Tenant Protection Act, we are encouraging property owners. To do long-term leases because they're, they're locked in anyway. So it would be in their best interest to do a long-term lease and it would be in the tenant's best interest to do a long-term lease because. That's what we're hearing. So i- is, i- am I misunderstanding this?
I'm gonna answer best I can with the caveat, I am not a landlord, so I can't, can't totally speculate. But as I've come to understand the Tenant Protection Act and rent stabilization in general. In some respects, these laws discourage long-term leases because they then, you don't have the ability to adjust the rent to the allowable increase in a given year. Because you've made an agreement on what the rent will be across the, the length of the uh, lease. Unless you've written into the language.
Right.
You get to move to the number, but um.
I mean, if you had a hypothetically, you have a five-year lease and you say, we're going to agree to a, you know, three-year increase, three percent increase every year for five years. I- isn't that, doesn't it seem like that's what we're?
Uh, you know, again, I I think, I think I just, I'm, I think you'd have to get a bunch of landlords in the room and they could give you their views on long-term leases. And one-year leases and and month-to-month leases and what they like and what they don't like about each structure.
Alright, thank you.
I think through a lot of the public comment we've had from property owners who have rentals, many of them in Larkspur have two, three, four units. Smaller things, they, in their written comments to us and in their um, public comments, say they do that. They do have long-term leases. Because they engage with their um, with their tenants to keep them there. And many of them, in fact, the woman who just spoke, twelve years, she's had the same tenant. So I think that does exist sort of um, organically in our environment. What we are seeing is um, the rapid change that occurred at one of our large properties. So I'm not sure that that is um, consistent across the smaller property owners.
Well, I I I guess my 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 point and uh, I I guess it's a question is that. It seems by passing tenant eviction protections, we would be encouraging landlords. To have long-term leases because. They can't terminate the lease anyway. So there's, once they 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 uh, find a tenant. That tenant's in there as long as the tenant wants to be in there. So it would be in the.
E- except for those, under current state law, you can end a tenancy for one of the just cause, no fault, just cause eviction.
But even if if you're in a a lease, you could still end it in the middle of a lease for one of those reasons.
You can, yes.
Right, so so that, so so i- it appears and and. And just just from kind of hearing all the comments and and everything we're talking about, that by passing just cause evictions, we are. We're 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 moving, we're encouraging landlords to have long-term leases with tenants, which is what tenants want as well. Because tenants want stability. So it feels like. That's what we're accomplishing. And I, I don't know if it's going to play out that way, but, but it seems like that's the incentives that we are providing to our community. Unless people see it differently, I would love to, to to hear.
I'm, yeah, I mean, I I think the, the issue is really. That that I'm getting out of this is, is that we have fourteen eighty-two. And you know, for those people who've said, give it time, let it work, there was a feeling that some of the items. Are really not protecting tenants enough, in particular move-out costs and some, and the three items that have been been highlighted. Um, what this may do as a economic incentivization or implication or stabilization, I, I I I'm not able to weigh that. I don't, I don't see the evidence. Um, but it's an interesting comment. So, um, and Kevin, do you have anything or any other thoughts? So again, we were, we were kind of a unanimous body on this one and I'm hoping we can. But but there were some good comments. I I just, um, well, you go first and then I'll, I I want to address some of the things that was in the chamber.
I'll pass.
Wow, okay, um, but we'll get back to you, I'm sure. Um, so I I think one of the things, uh, I I believe one of the speakers brought up. Was uh, the the five thousand or, you know, the three months at market and and you know, whether that would be. Share, for example, for a JD or ADU. So uh, one thing I I wanted to clarify with staff, you know, I I believe it's pretty clear in the ordinance. Is that ADUs and JDUs are accepted here. So this, this is, this is not an ordinance that would apply to ADUs or JDs. So so that that part, I just, you know, because it was a little confusing reading and hearing the public comment. Um, as far as, you know, the intention of the council, I think, was really that. You know, this has been a long process and, you know, I think even from the public comment tonight, or it's been more divided in the past. The, you know, my, my uh, hope was that we could reach a middle ground and I I don't think we did. Um, but if if someone is, you know, asked to leave for no cause, you know, no, no, no fault of their own. That, you know, given how expensive it is to get just a moving truck out there and that you have to move in paying first month, last month and so forth. And the fact that I went to many of the stakeholders here, you know, the prime community, the Bonner community, some of the landowners. And it's not like these things happen that commonly. It seemed that that was, that was a compromise that, that's, that was acceptable. And it it offers a level of protection and it, uh, you know, I'm I'm willing to see if anyone here wants to go back to that. But I think as a council, we reached the consensus that that was fair. And uh, and then I think on on Scott's point, you know, that that, I I don't know if there's anything we can do tonight. About um, bringing in the appeal process. So if you've taken something and you substantially. Invested in it, but now you're held by right of first refusal, right of return to hold down submarket. I I'm I'm not sure not giving the owner an appeal would would seem, seem fair. I don't know if that's something you want to visit tonight.
I mean, I think per the city manager, that if we, um, that's, these are all, often these ordinances are works in progress. So we could, can, we could, um, with an implementation strategy to to really determine through the data that can be collected. If we have to strengthen it in other ways, we could. In two, five months, four months or something like that. But a- as we know now from the information that we received. We don't have a lot of evictions of this fault, no-fault type that have been coming forward, at least at this point. So we can always add, we can always add to an ordinance.
Okay, so I'm I'm inferring from that that you're supportive of the ordinance as written.
Well, I I think that we need, before we do that, I think we need further conversation about the amendments that were put forward by. Um, Councilmember Carol over, which were the additional ones of uh. If someone has resided there twelve consecutive months and is sixty-two years of age or terminally ill, that was brought up at sort of the end. Does anybody want to have any further thought about that? And I I appreciate that we did get a, we did get a a definition of government code of what. Uh, because I was concerned that we weren't um, defining our terms and I, I think that's appropriate to define them under government code section. So there's consistency. What do you think about that one?
Uh, I, could, could you just go through, um, I I I understand that, the age, yeah.
So, do you want to read it or or do you, okay, I've got it right here. Um, that it was under, it was added under section C. The amount of relocation assistance shall be equal to three months of the tenant's rent that was effect, okay, I'm going to move ahead to the part. Um, if a tenant or a member of tenant's household has resided in the unit for at least twelve. Consecutive months and is sixty-two years of age or older, disabled or certified to be terminally ill by the treating, by the treating physician. It should be a treating physician. The amount of relocation assistance shall be increased by three thousand dollars. For the purposes of this section, the term disabled shall have the same meaning as that in Government Code Section twelve nine five five point three. As may be amended or renumbered from time to time, any relocation assistance shall be provided within fifteen calendar days of service of the notice. So that references what uh, Councilmember Carol brought up.
Just so there's no confusion, though, you passed those amendments. So they're part of what's in front of you. So if you now feel you want to change those, you're. You'd have to go back to the beginning.
I don't want to change them. I just want to make sure we highlight that, that.
And that was why we left them in legislative notation, so people could easily see what you added to the ordinance at the last meeting.
So I think my point was, is that this is um, a conversation that we had a lot of give and take on uh, as to what would be um, included. And that was an amendment that was brought forward that I think we all accepted.
Yeah, I mean, I I just, I'll say that I I appreciated Councilmember Carol including this. Uh, you know, what has drawn me to the issue is our demographics, partly the the silver tsunami, so to speak, that by twenty thirty, we're going to have. Uh, you know, over half the ci- city is going to be, you know, sixty-five or older and and. You know, that's why I think this is a work in progress and I I, you know, I think what we spent all this time doing was not wasted time. Because I don't think it's going away. I think this is a conversation that's going to continue. Um, so I'm I'm supportive of it. I appreciate the addition. I think there was a second one, uh. Or was that, was that the only one that was added to just cause? Um. Okay, okay, so, I I mean, with that, I, again, I'm. You know, looking to the council here, I I feel like we have something that we. On the twenty-first of June. Introduced, uh, you know, we took it out of public hearing and introduced for first reading or second reading and, and here we are today. I'm. Do we need any more discussion, any more amendments or any more thoughts? And Councilmember Carol, you're killing me with your silence.
I'm tired.
We're all tired.
We've been talking about this for so long. And that. I have no further. Comments, and so I would move. Uh, item seven point two A, ordinance ten six eight, the Larkspur Just Cause Evictions and Tenant Protections Ordinance. Move.
I will second that.
Okay, then we get a roll call.
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes, it'd be great. So pass the unanimous. You guys want to take a break? Yeah, well, why don't we take a five-minute break? I think that was, uh, that deserves a bio break or. A little nap. We'll be back. Uh, it's, it's eight thirteen now. Why don't we give ourselves till eight twenty-seven minutes? So welcome back, everybody. We just took a, a few minute break and it's eight twenty and we're uh, returning to our regular meeting here. And we're on the last item, uh, seven point two B. And that was the um, ordinance, uh, ten sixty-seven Larkspur Rent Stabilization Ordinance. Um, so again, we've had public comment, we've had a staff report and, you know, now as a council, we're looking at that. And I just wanted to, um, you know, by way of introduction, you know, look a little bit at the journey of the last, you know, thirty days or so. Um, so I think what we had arrived at, you know, with the full council of five members. Was, you know, we, we had the ordinance with some measure of a rental registry. Um, some appeal process and we were going to take the state cap and just for starters, go from ten to seven. You know, given the experience of of, you know, COVID and and the inflation afterwards. And on that, we had a four-one vote. So all the members here voted for it and and Councilmember Harrop against. Uh, and then on the twenty-first, um, we had multiple amendments, uh, the first, and and they were all around the cap. Well, actually, the first amendment was to. Um, to the um. Right of, uh, sorry, the the rollback. And so there was quite a bit of debate on the rollback. And and that one was, you know, somewhat split, but we had um, a three-two vote, uh, that we were going to do the rollback. And then the next three, uh, amend, well, the next two amendments were to go two-thirds CPI or five, whichever is lower. And that was a two, uh, two, four, three against. And then uh, CPI or seven. That was two, three against. And then what really surprised me is the original, uh, you know, skeleton that we had and had a four. One suddenly became two, four and three against. So we we really passed nothing. Um, and on reflection, you know, I I think that, uh, you know, I I understand the disappointment and I share some of that myself. I I really felt my position was to, to find a place where the, the landlord community, the tenant community. Could work without going to the polls, going to the courts, you know, without our city council being so fragile that. On the basis of one council member leaving, you know, and another coming, everything could turn itself on its head. Uh, and so really what we started discussing, you know, as this was dragging on and on, is that. What was probably more appropriate is for this to go to the voter, which is, I think, what, you know, what is happening and what people want anyways. Is to, you know, just take it to the ballot box and that would create a stability. Once it's voted in, that is what it is. And um, you know, I I'm, as I mentioned at the last meeting, to me, this is a living, ongoing topic. I have said my doors open and. My intention is to continue to reach out to renters, understand the situation, you know, the, the middle ground that I was hoping for was a place where we could really watch things. And, and you know, and take action as we will on our just, you you know, our just cause evictions will come back and you can amend that as needed. We'll probably lose that ability, but, you know, given how divisive this has been on the council, we've had such a hard time reaching any kind of consensus. Uh, I I feel like that's where it is, but anyway, that's a, you know, rather lengthy two, three-minute intro. But I'm, you know, I'm going to see if the council members have any other thoughts. Otherwise, it it did not, you know, uh, you know, the public, you know, uh, hearing. Ended it, it, we didn't move it to a first reading and and so, you know, it's it's just left at that. And I don't know if there's any, any further thoughts. Or, you know, it seems like that issue's reached some closure there.
So. I'm on the fence with the. Ordinance that we have. I was leaning towards it. Until the last city council meeting. And we had all the public comment. And everybody hated it. Right, the tenants hated it because they said it's not strong enough. It only is seven percent. The landlords hated it because they don't want any type of rent control. And it's going to cost us one to two hundred thousand dollars, you know, to do it. And I was thinking, what are we doing? Why, why would we pass something that everyone hates that's going to cost taxpayers money? Having said that, sometimes the best legislation is the legislation that everybody hates. Because that means you've struck a balance. You know, if some people love it and some people hate it, you know, it's probably not fair or in the middle. You know, the fact that nobody liked it, maybe that, that's not such a bad thing. So, you know, I I'm still on on the fence and I'm happy to discuss this. I'm I'm. Again, I I know it's not ideal that the tenants eh, don't want something stronger than than seven percent. Uh, or, you know, five percent plus CPI or seven percent. I get that. I get that. Property owners don't want it because they don't want to be stuck, you know, with, they have a below-market. You know, uh, situation, they want to be able to bring it up to market. And I kind of think it's a fair compromise. Um. So. I I I, I don't know, I'm I'm okay if if we decide, you know what, let's let, bring it, give it the voters and let everybody vote on it, so be it. You know? But if if there are people on the council that are comfortable with this compromise, I I would probably be comfortable with it as well. So. I would love to hear other people's perspective, but that's, that that's kind of where I am. And Catherine, I know you're, you're a fan of put it on the ballot. And I'm not against that either. I I don't think that's a a bad choice. Because why should four people determine something that affects so many people and is, you know, such as, an important issue? But then I go back to Gabe's point is that that we have more, if we pass it, we have flexibility to make it stronger, to change it, to do whatever we want to do at some point. Which we wouldn't if it went to the ballot, so.
Well, it can be, I mean, if it goes to a ballot measure, it can be also repealed.
Revealed, but exactly.
But there are more, I mean, uh, on this flip side, there are more renters, um, who would uh, have an opportunity to vote. Then there are property owners too. So I. I I mean, I I think that's the conundrum of this, is that why it's taken us eleven months to get this far is because it is not a win-win for every. For people and policies like this, um, have huge economic impacts on all spectrums of people. Which is why I, uh, having felt, um, I mean, I know so many of you consistently come. And and share your stories and your feelings with us. As policymakers, at the same time, we also have all these other individuals who are sharing the opposite opinion. And um, that's part of the compromise that has to happen as policymakers. And they may write in, they may stop you when you're walking down the street. And they may write in, they may stop you when you're walking down the street, they may call you, they may do things, but they may not show up, but we still have to listen to their voices too. So um, I've felt all along that this is complex for a lot of individuals and it's an economic argument per for a lot of people. And just like economic arguments of parcel taxes and school taxes, we take them to the ballot. Because it it adversely affects some people more than others. Uh, it just strikes me and and I think we heard that tonight, that a citizen-driven, um, uh, initiative may be an option. So I I still think that would be the way to hear more voices than the four of us, because we're down to four now. And the four of us making a a large economic policy decision that does not have the full weigh-in of um, of all the constituents, I'm not sure that that would be our best approach. So, uh, a- and I think we're gonna see that, that that's gonna be the approach that's gonna be taken across many jurisdictions, not just here in Marin County, but in ma- many other places for that very reason that there, um, it's an economic, uh, burden and a challenge for across spectrum of the community. But it's not a win-win and it's not a lose-lose. That's just the thing.
Yeah, I I mean, it's I like, like I said, I I I am on the fence about it. Um. And I know we, uh, Mayor Paulson, you know, we we've spoken about, you know, uh, unintended consequences of of rent control and, you know, I think this is kinda me, eh, reasonable, stick your toe in the water and see what happens. It's not extreme. I don't think the sky is gonna fall. Um. Yeah, so uh, that's, that's where I am. Um. Yeah. And and I'm sorry, what what what, I guess a staff question, if you could remind us, i- if we decided that we wanted to, uh, in other word, ret- make this retroactive. Uh, we decided we could go back to a certain date. Uh, I don't recall what that was, but you know, it was, it was maybe January first or, you know.
It was February.
May eight.
Or May.
May eight was
May of last year.
Of this year.
This year.
May of Okay, okay. Got it. Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Carol, come on. Join the party.
First, I wanna There's one issue I would like to to take separately and ask staff about, um. Regardless of how we go on this particular one tonight, if it did go um, that it does not pass in any shape or form, is it possible for us to still do a rent registry as an entirely separate ordinance? Um, cause this is an issue, again, I brought up a number of times, that affects not just this but also how we do our general plan, um. Our Rena numbers, uh, all of our housing elements that are involved in those processes is having good factual data on what the market is happening right now, cause most of the data we get is from the census, which is can be three to five years old by the time it's collected and presented to us. So is that a a reasonable?
So in our, in our research, we did find one jurisdiction that has instituted a rental registry but did not institute rent stabilization. So I'm gonna assume since that exists in another jurisdiction that it can be done, yes.
Okay, and would that be helpful in all the things that I've mentioned? In the planning for both Rena numbers and the general plan and?
Not sure how helpful it'd be for Rena numbers, since those are sort of imposed to us by a regional body and we're sort of just stuck dealing with what they came up with and their formula, unless maybe we could use it to make arguments the next time they're working on the formula. Um, I think where it could be helpful to us is to understand the breadth of our offerings now. You know, we don't have any idea how many two-bedroom apartments are in Larkspur versus three-bedroom apartments versus studios. We don't have a a solid understanding of that. We we could go through our permits and kinda start to get a rough estimate, but that detailed count is one of the things a registry would provide to us.
Okay, thank you. So that's something I would like to keep in mind. Um. I wanna thank the tenants who've shown up so consistently and written in and testified by Zoom and in person. Uh, you've re- field very personal details about your life that as a society, we don't talk about those things usually. Um, and I know it's not easy. On the other side from the landlords nothing. You don't want us to know your books, you don't want us to know your profit margins, you don't wanna really r- reveal anything about what's going on behind the scenes. I have not seen a landlord yet who's really given us any numbers, period. I've seen a couple of comments with generalizations. Um, and I love the line about being an ethical landlord. That one really cracked me up, cause no one ever accused anyone of not being ethical until the landlords started all claiming to be ethical landlords. I would assume that went with territory. Um. It's kind of is a Pope Catholic question, but anyway, um. We are where we are, um. I think this is probably going to end up on the ballot. Which will be a much harder process for us to deal with. That was one of the reasons I was hoping we would pass it as a council, was so that if we saw harm being done either to the tenants and I was willing to even go for the uh, higher rate, the seven percent, just because in the hope that when I saw, I I know under that number, people will be being forced out. Particularly those on social security. Um. And at least it would give us the opportunity to react quicker. Uh, if the numbers from the registry showed us that uh, there was a problem there that was occurring. If a tenant sponsored initiative is put on the ballot, we're not gonna have any flexibility. Um. It'll be a much longer process to amend it or to correct any errors. And that saddens me because my concern is not just for the tenants, it's for the landlords too. It's for those smaller landlords. Uh, and if they come to us with that as showing that they're being hurt, then I I absolutely I wanna act to help them and to protect them. Uh, and I'm just afraid we're down the road now to where it's not gonna happen. Uh, and we're gonna end up in a much more contentious environment with the next few years, and that saddens me, it really does. Um. Why presumably we ran for office and what the public expects from us is action and to do things. Um. Picking the football down the road like this is, uh, to me, very disheartening. This is I don't wanna go on too long about this. Um, it is what it is and we'll live with it. So I would assume the mayor may have some more comments and I'll wait till then.
Alright, thank you. And I do, um, yeah, I mean, I I and I think, you know, here we are, you know, so many months later and it's, you know, many of us are exhausted, you know, for various reasons. Um, you know, first, I I wanna concur with with what you just said, Kevin. I mean, I do appreciate all the tenants and I've really tried to, you know, to meet with and listen and feel, you know, what what's going on and it's, it's, you know, and there were some pretty, you know, intense, uh, comments tonight and I take it in. Um, it is a human issue and it's been one that we've discussed because of that and it's 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 all over the county. I think it's gonna come up in San Anselmo. It's you know, it's going on in Fairfax. It's gonna happen at the county level. I hear about it in the other districts. Uh, you know, council member Candell saying, you know, maybe people not liking it, uh, is a sign that we're doing something right. You know, that kind of looked good to me when I wasn't making the decisions. It seemed very appealing, but I I was, I've been guided by the feedback that, you know, I think as a community, we're better off if we have some guardrails, something that we can live with and work with. I I've talked to Romeo, I've talked to Angelita, I've talked to Will and Elif and the Bon Air, I've talked to Njoki, I've talked to, you know, Tristan, I've talked to, you know, pretty much I'm naming the people who are sitting here and I I um, I feel like all of you, I've taken in everything you've said. I've really listened to you and I understand, you know, you represent interests and and, you know, the the challenge that I think council member, uh, Way is talking about is that, you know, it's hard, the loudest voice is not the most representative, it's not always the right voice, so it's really hard to weigh these things. Um, but what where we landed uh, and, you know, what I felt good about is that we would have an ordinance. And it's something that no landlord has said to me, this is crazy, you know, I it's uncomfortable, but we can't deny that there's a huge crisis. And I also believe that housing is not solved by rent control. You know, I really am waiting to double down on the affordable housing piece I spent a whole year on as well. And nobody wants to do this, but the the subsidy piece like the Skylark Fund, I really wanna see what can be done about that. So I think, I think when people talk about their pain, the answer isn't gonna be, is it seven or CPI or ten? I think there's a much broader conversation. I'm fully aware and that gives me pause. But to the point, um, I think the seven percent is helpful. You know, whoever s- spoke tonight, you know, was it Josette or Anne or or Karen? Ten percent is hard, seven percent is better. It's the halfway point to where you wanna be at four. Um, and it's a starting point. And I think we we it, we're a community, we're we're not gonna look at at what's going on in San Francisco or Berkeley or Fairfax. We're Larkspur and we need to understand our landlords and our tenants and act accordingly. So an ordinance is preferable in that sense. And after all this deliberation, this seemed to be the middle point where we could all live. Nobody completely happy, but it's a work in progress. So I am like, I'm I'm not on the fence, that that was what I tried to create here and I was very proud of getting a four-one that fell apart on the twenty-first. That's something I would be willing to entertain, you know, to move and and we would move it from the public hearing to a first reading, if that's what we do. And and that's something we could discuss further. So the conclusion of tonight would be, we have an ordinance ten sixty-eight and then ten sixty-seven would move into the same slot as ten sixty-seven was, or ten sixty-eight was. Um, and, uh, Sky, if you correct me if I'm wrong, that's that's where we are, right? So we, the last one, ten sixty-seven never got out of public hearing. But if we reached a vote, then it would go into, uh, into the same status that ten sixty-eight was.
Yes, I mean, I'd just say that ten sixty-seven was moved seconded and did not get a majority vote. Um, but yes, if somebody wanted to move ten sixty-seven tonight, the agenda is set up to allow for that. If there's a second, you can call for a vote on it. If it receives three votes, then it will have been introduced and, uh, next meeting, we'll bring it back for adoption.
Right. Okay, so looking at the hour, uh, I will move ten sixty-seven.
And before, anybody, um, one thing that did, because of, I don't think the version that is nope, never mind, there it is. I was looking to make sure that ten, no, wait, sorry, uh. If you recall, ten sixty-eight, you did end up adding a sunset of December thirty-first, twenty thirty. Um, that is not included in the draft of the ten sixty-seven, I don't believe. Um, so I guess my question to you, Mary, would be, um, do you want to include the December thirty?
Would move it with the sunset, which which aligns with AB fourteen eighty-two, as I appreciate of, uh, the date you just said.
So they would make that, uh, section six dot twenty dot one twenty. Um, and I'll just use the same wording as for ordinance ten sixty-eight, which is, uh, this chapter shall automatically sunset on December thirty-first, twenty thirty. So that, so it's just clar- clarify that that that's included in your motion.
That is my motion.
Uh, I I would just like to ask, uh, council member Way, uh, is there anything that you else wanted to say before we vote on this? Okay.
This, and I think my opinion has been consistent.
Okay.
Um. But thank you for asking.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
No.
Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes. So, um, that means now, uh, just to recap, we passed ordinance ten sixty-eight just cause and we have moved, uh, ordinance ten sixty-seven out of public hearing and introduce it for a first reading and that'll come up at either our next council meeting or or when that's agendaised.
Um, I mean, I recommend that the council make a motion to bring it back on, uh, your second meeting in August, which is August sixteen. Cause my understanding is all four of you will be present at that meeting and all four of you will not be present on August second.
I I will not be, I'll be remote, um, if that, I I mean, I brown act wise, I I can attend, but but I will be, I will be here.
On the sixteen.
On the sixteen.
If the vote remains consistent, then if I'm not here on August third, it won't matter.
Uh, okay, if you wanna have it on August second, we can, we can do it then.
Yeah, um, can, you can attend remote, you'll be I I think, um, I mean, there's a rollback and and I I think i- it would be better if all four of us were sitting here doing it together. I I mean, this is something that, you know, there will be public comment. This is not I mean, we've struggled with this, but I feel proud that we've could, you know, kept with it and I think, you know, something that's good, good is gonna come out of the side. I prefer that we just do it in September then. If not, if we can't get a, you know, the four of us all here in August. And I I'm not sure what, you know, negative consequences would occur from that because, again, we're we're not postponing what effect it has.
I just said you have a thirty-day clock after your second reading, so you're just pushing out when that thirty-day clock starts.
And that, you're not gonna be here because of Cal cities?
No, that's my my once more vacation. I'll be gone from eleven to twenty.
So.
You could also call a special meeting. I mean, you could.
Uh, if you could land on a meeting date tonight, you could adjourn this meeting to that date. That date would be what's called an adjourned regular meeting and you would be able to adopt the ordinance at that, but you cannot adopt an ordinance at a special meeting.
Okay, and and I'm sorry, just just for understanding, since there is a rollback date, um. Whether it takes an extra two weeks to pass this or not, it's still gonna be effective as of May, whatever we said it was, right? So that it shouldn't, I don't, I don't see the the harm in putting it out two weeks unless anybody disagrees.
Good. So, so, um, I I I guess we're not gonna do this in April, we're gonna try, I mean, then more than a cup of coffee.
Well, I guess I'll make sure that everybody plans on being here on September sixth.
Yeah. Yep, okay, that's
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that concludes the public hearing. Um. The next item, business items, we have none, which brings us to adjournment and our next regular meeting will be on the second. I guess council member Way will not be but but we'll have three people, so. Yes. Uh, not really. I mean, I we can, we can talk afterwards. Uh, not really. I mean, I, we can, we can talk afterwards. That, that's what the rollback is for. So. Okay, so, uh, our meeting is adjourned.